Good evening and welcome to the Housing Subcommittee Meeting. Today is Monday, January 22, 2018. Councilors, this is the first organizational meeting for the Housing Committee. And as a result, I am here to call for a motion to elect a chair. But I just wanted to point out that before this meeting, I spoke to our city clerk and our city attorney in terms of the absence of one of the city councilors due to the fact that she is out of the country. Her daughter was giving birth to her grandson, so she left the country to England. And as a result of that, we are short one member and will not be able to make a selection for a permanent chair for the Subcommittee. The suggestion and the recommendation made by the city attorney and the city clerk is that we elect tonight only a chair pro temp in order to be able to conduct business. And in the following Subcommittee meeting, we will decide who will serve as the chair or and/or vice chair for this Subcommittee. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing there's none, I would like to open the floor for nomination for a chair pro temp.
Can I nominate Councilor DeBuny with you guys?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please state the name of the person you are. Any other nominations? Seeing there's none.
I have a nomination.
All those in favor, please state the name of the person you will be voting for. Councilor Rodriguez.
Councilor Rodriguez.
Councilor Payano.
Councilor Rodriguez.
Councilor Laplante.
Councilor Rodriguez.
Councilor Rodriguez, you become the chair pro temp. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilor, for the nomination. So we're going to go straight up to conduct business. We have two items tonight and two more items that we're going to be taking out of the tail matters for sure. Today is Monday, January 22, 2018, and this is the Housing Committee. On the agenda, we have two new items, Item 60-17, which is the disposition of 370 Essex Street. Liza from the Planning Committee is here tonight. Welcome, up in 2018.
Good evening, councilors. Item 60-17 is disposition of 370 Essex Street, map 125 lot 9. It's an area of 4,000 square feet. It has a mixed-use building. We did an RFP over the summer with a minimum bid of $505,000. We received one bid from the Greater Lawrence Community Action Council for the bid amount of $505,000. They're here to talk over their proposal. Their proposal for 370 Essex Street is a combination of that RFP and also the next item. I don't know if we want to talk about it at the same time.
No, once we get to the point, we'll talk about it.
So if you look at the second page of the memorandum provided, it shows the conditions which were selling the property. First of all, they need to comply with the purchase and sales agreement established by the city attorney's office. They must execute said agreement within 30 days of the city council approval. They must comply with all zoning and building permits, rules of regulations, and all costs and responsibilities for obtaining subdivision approvals, site plans approval, and releases of any Eastman covenants or any other restrictions that may be present on the property will be the responsibility of the Greater Lawrence Community Action Council. And the fifth condition is that work must be completed within 36 months of closing, and the city reserves the right to extend that line. On the third page, you see a little map of the subject area. It shows you the area where it's located. It's right on Essex Street. I'm sure we are all familiar with the location. And the last page is just the accessory map. The Greater Lawrence Community Action did pass out a summary of their proposal for you to review, and I'll just introduce her to...
All right. I would like to get, you know, an update of what's going to be proposed there.
Okay. So I will bring the executive director of the...
Could you speak a little bit? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Can you speak a little bit closer to the mic?
Okay.
I sometimes I can't hear too well.
So I will have Evelyn Friedman from the Greater Lawrence Community Action Council to talk to you about the project that they're proposing.
Thank you, Liza. And good evening, city councilors. I'm Evelyn Friedman. I'm the executive director of the Greater Lawrence Community Action Council, and we responded to an RFP and submitted this proposal in August of 2017. The proposal is to redevelop the building at 370 Essex Street and the land at 372-386 Essex Street, the adjoining parcel. The parcel, when completed, it will contain 39 units of housing and 77 square feet of retail space. I was asked to include some of our development experience because GLCAC is not really a developer, hasn't been a developer in the past, but that my experience is in development, community development.
Can you repeat the squad footage again?
The what?
The squad footage.
39 units of housing with one bedrooms, three bedrooms, two bed... one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedrooms, and 7,700 square feet of retail space.
Okay. On the retail space, what's the plan for the retail space? On the retail spaces, what's the plan?
You mean who's going to be in there, or...
Perhaps what type of business might be there, or if it's any business.
We don't know yet. We would design the space for tenants as they came. In other words, we could lease the whole 77 square feet, or we could make smaller units.
So it's going to be 39 units, 14 one-bedroom, 22 bedrooms, and 5 three-bedrooms?
Yes.
And was that's going to be affordable housing, or that's going to be what's going to...
It's going to be affordable housing, but for people who are 52... whose income is 52.5, families of 52.5 or less, $52,500 or less. The average area median income from Lawrence is $35,000.
So that's a 52,500 for family of how many members?
Four.
Four?
Sure. How do you...
Councilor Laplante?
So, number one, we're adding a lot more housing units in the city of Lawrence through this project.
Yes.
Number one. Number two, what's... will these properties be taxed? Are they taxable properties?
Yes, they will.
Okay. So I'm presuming you're familiar with the amazing growth that we're going through in our city with respect to housing?
I didn't hear that.
I am presuming that you are aware of the tremendous growth we're having in our city with respect to housing.
Yes.
We're going through a boom right now in housing, where we're talking about over 1,000 or more units throughout the city, mostly in many of our mill buildings. So with that, of course, it comes to the... clearly, there's a need for housing. There always is a need for housing. But with that comes an obligation to educate individuals as well, school systems, traffic, parking, et cetera. You said there are families going to be moving into these places? That's the design? Design's going to have families?
Well, the two- and three-bedroom units will probably have families in them. The single... the one-bedroom units probably won't.
So when you had discussions with the administration on this, and I presume that you may have, did that come up in the conversations at all? Were the children going to be going to school, and do we have space for the children?
We didn't have that conversation, no.
That's a concern of mine. I just want to make sure that I'm on the record. I've been consistent about this now for at least two years, saying we're going to be building more and more housing units. The question is, where are these kids going to go to school? When it takes... when it takes an extraordinary amount of time to go from one end of the city to the other because of the traffic cycles, the traffic on Broadway, Hayrow Street, all the main thoroughfares, we have tremendous traffic. The question is, we're adding more people into our city, and there are more cars to our city. How are we dealing with the traffic and congestion? When we get calls after winter snowstorms with respect to plowing issues, and we're not having a place to find a parking place, we have spent hours in this room talking about neighbors concerned about where can they park the car because they don't have a place to park their car on the street, and they have to go a block and a half to go parking. We make ourselves into pretzels trying to figure out what we need to do. This city was designed at one point, we had many more people... I don't need to tell you this, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, but we had nearly 100,000 people in this city, but not many people had cars back 100 years ago. Now with nearly 80,000 people in the city, we have housing units where people got two, three, or four cars because I've got a 17-year-old and an 18-year-old, and I have an aunt and an uncle who live with me as well, and they're all driving cars. And all of a sudden, we've got a tremendous number of parking things. So I say this in a way of presenting a picture. As we go forward in adding more units, which sounds great at one level, the other thing is we have ancillary problems that come with it. And before we start going forward this, we need to think through how we deal with this. Unfortunately, I'm almost done with my diatribe here. Our zoning board, I love them all, fantastic people, but we're allowing way too many variances going on over there that haven't even come before this council. Here's one opportunity for the city council to weigh in on whether or not we want to continue to have that. And I do understand that we have an underutilized property right there, and that with this... with an influx of money that you're essentially proposing to bring in over there, that's actually going to take an underutilized or maybe a property that's really not doing much of anything and putting it on the tax rolls perhaps, and making sure it's usable. And I get that, and that's attractive to me. But the problem is, is that attractiveness is also tempered by the fact that we're now adding a lot of other problems. And while what may look good right now in the big picture may not be in what's best for our residents in our city. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Laplante? Councilor Payano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, thank you... I'm sorry. Okay. Learn something every day. Thank you, Councilor Laplante. Some of the questions that I had were around this. I think one of the things that I've seen, you know, as a school committee member for about seven years, and, you know, I would see us approve a lot of these sort of, you know, new housing coming in without at least asking the question, how is this going to affect the schools, and how is this going to affect public safety? These... the kids that would be living in this housing would probably be going to the Oliver School, which hopefully, in like the next four years, will be completed. But before I get there, just, you know, some of my questions, when do you think so, as far as the timeline? If this was approved and this were to start, you know, in a couple of months?
So at the last page of the handout that I provided, there's a graph timeline. So these units would... we'd start construction probably in 2020, late 2020, and the units would come online late... it's the last page of this one. And the units would come online late 2021, so just around the same time that the Oliver School would open.
Okay. Thank you. As far as parking, is that taken into account?
That's the next...
Oh, that's the next item. Okay.
But I can answer that question if you like. We have had discussions with the city about leasing both a lot that's on Methuen Street and also the Buckley Garage. For the... and it's in the... right now, it's in the operating budget for the project.
Okay. And do we have an idea?
Just to clarify something before you continue. On the project, there, Liza, this project is including the parking lot that is right next to it, or the empty lot that is right next to it, right?
It does, so that will be...
So the intention, that lot is not going to be empty for parking?
It will not be parking.
It will not be parking.
If you look at the image, this is the existing structure.
Yes.
It will be built up. That's what we asked under request for proposal. We do not want to remain the... keep it as parking on Essex Street.
So it will not be parking?
It will not be parking?
No.
Yeah.
You can bring that.
This is Eric Chamberlain. He is...
You can take that.
Oh, I can move it? Oh, all right. This is Eric Chamberlain. He is with Davis Square Architects, our architect. So the current building, the existing building, is this structure here, and this is the vacant lot, the structure that we would propose to build on the vacant lot. And the reason you'd want to do that is not to have sort of a broken line across on Essex Street, so you want to have like a nice building view along Essex Street and not have vacant parcels. What we're talking about is a parcel that's on behind on Methuen Street or on in the Buckley Garage, which is a half a block, which we would lease from the city.
My next questions are for Mrs. Senna Ange, if you may. So I just want to get a better understanding of the bidding process, you know? So this was put out to bid in August, I think you said?
The deadline was in August. It was put out to bid the second week of July.
Okay.
The deadline was August 28, so it was out for about six weeks.
Okay.
And how it works, we advertise in the Central Register with the State of Massachusetts. It's an online database that the state keeps. We also advertise in Diego Tribune twice, and we also advertise in another newspaper. We also put the information on the city website, and I also maintain an emailing list of everyone who has come into our office who have asked for information. We do maintain an email list, and we send an email to all interested investors, individuals that have come to the office with interest. So a big email's gets sent out to over around 500 individuals in addition to the advertisement that we do.
Why do you think that there was no sort of like competition for this?
The building needs a lot of work. Also, we did get a lot of people to come in when they looked at the condition of the building. We... I expected more bids, but unfortunately, we only received one. The good thing about that bid, it was a great proposal. They put in a lot of work, and luckily, it was a great proposal even though we only received one bid.
Can I ask, so I wasn't here in the city council last term. For how much did we buy this building for?
We bought it for $505,000.
Councilor Laplante sort of was asking questions before about how this would affect public safety and education, and I just wanted to know, was that something that your office took into account? Like, has there been any type of discussion? Because I think, you know, at any time that, you know, I echo his thoughts, at any time that we are adding dwellings to our neighborhood, we should have conversations with public safety, of course, but also the other individuals that are living in the area. So my question is, has there been any type of discussions with our public safety leaders and also the business leaders in that area?
I personally did not have any conversation about that, but we did take... took into consideration the urban renewal plan that indicates that we need more housing unit. We also, because it's in the downtown area, my feeling is that, you know, public transportation will be used. It will revitalize this area that there's absolutely not much going on in that area. But there...
So when you say revitalize this area, why do you think it would do that?
What was that again?
Like, why do you think it would revitalize the area?
I think having people live there and having retail services there, having... I think it will bring more people shopping in the downtown area, revitalize Essex Street, bring more business in the area.
So I don't know if this is... in other communities, you see a very sort of thoughtful approach about, you know, when they are developing a certain area as far as, you know, the type of individuals that they think are going to be coming in. I'm not sure if I exactly see that with this. I think it looks like we're doing affordable housing, you know, right on Essex Street.
Yeah.
I'll bring the business economic development to answer that.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Abel Vargas, 610 Hayrow Street, Lawrence, Mass. Yeah, we have spent a substantial amount of time identifying opportunities and assessing impact of these types of developments in downtown. I think some of you participate in the urban renewal plan, and if you read the plan, it identifies these types of uses as adding value to our downtown. So we hired this consultant, the Boston Consultant, to come in and provide us with this level of guidance. And one of the parts that were identified as a gap in our ability to provide ample, I guess, market for... to frequent the businesses is to have residential uses in our downtown. And this part in particular was identified as one that could add value to that. In terms of the schools, we have been in constant communications with the administration, with Jeff Riley and his office, and he's... they are clear on the amount of units that are coming online, when they're coming online, and the makeup of those units. I think it's important for us to have constant communication with the school department so that they are able to plan accordingly based on the number of people that will be coming into the city. This particular development is likely to have more families than other projects that we have downtown, like Pacific Mills or Washington Mills Phase 2. Those are less likely to have families living in them, whereas this one, we totally anticipate there being a substantial amount of families, particularly Lawrence families, living in these dwellings. So I just want to answer those two questions. One, we have been thoughtful. It's not pan in the sky. We spent a lot of time, money, and effort identifying opportunities, and a lot of time and effort trying to make sure that we get the right development that reflect the will and the feedback that we've gotten from the, you know, 400 residents that we interviewed and had conversations with. So this is thoughtful. It's not just throwing things up in the air.
Well, no, I mean, so my apologies if I made it seem like you're just throwing up in the air. It's obvious from this amazing presentation. That's not what it is. Why sort of affordable housing and not like mixed housing?
Yeah, so I'll paint you a picture of all the housing that's coming downtown. So under construction right now, we have Washington Mills Lofts Phase 2 that has 198 units of market rate housing. Right next to it, they have a two-story building that's going to be another 19 units of housing. Right next to that, Pacific Mills, they have 169 units of market rate housing that's going to be coming online by March, April. Phase 3 of that project is an additional 176. They have not began that, but that's in the pipeline to be constructed as well, and that's also market rate housing. Down the street, you have a building referred to as PAC 10 or 5 Franklin Street, where Sapato Aki used to be, if you may be familiar, and there's 276 units there.
How many?
276. Phase 1 of that... Phase 1 of that project is 186 units, and the second phase is going to be 100 units. They will include about 300 parking spaces inside of the building, and I want to say 50% will be affordable. I don't know the exact percentages, but 50% will be at affordable, at around 60% AMI. And that's important, the designation between 30% and 60% is important.
Yes, as a point of information, do you think that we can... you can find out about the exact percentage of the affordable housing?
I could email it to all of you if you like. So just to give you a sense, 50% will be affordable, about 40% will be this program called workforce housing, and that program's important because you're allowed to go between 80% and 120% of AMI. And that's super important because if I'm a nurse... if my wife's a nurse and I'm an IT person, and we make $65,000 a year, $70,000 a year, I make too much money to go into affordable housing, but I don't make enough to be able to pay market rate. So this program that was put together by Mass Housing, it clearly goes after that crowd of people, so it's young professionals. And then there's going to be 10 or 15%, maybe 20%, that will be market rate housing in that 276 units. So there is, you know, diversity in income levels. This specific program, project, 39 units will be affordable, but that's just a small portion of the total units that are going to be downtown.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vargas.
There is any questions, councilors? Councilor, we've received a lot of information today. I'm assuming that I have... I would like to go through all this information, find out more about the project before I actually send this item to the full council. I don't know if the other members of this committee feel the same way. Unfortunately, this information wasn't with us before, but I do whatever you guys feel like is appropriate for this item.
I have another question. I have another question for Mr. Vargas. I am extremely interested in the numbers that he gave, and now I finally was able to find some names with that. So one of them is the Van Brody Mill. Which one is that? Is that...
Oh, so Van Brody Mill is... it's outside of the district or outside of this area, this right behind Law 550?
How many numbers?
That's 103.
101? Is that still 103? That's still on target going forward?
Yeah, so they're supposed to... they're supposed to be closing on financing soon.
How about 5 Franklin? I think you said that. Is that the 276?
Yeah, and they're closing on financing on Friday.
Monarch Lofts Phase 2, is that done yet?
That is under construction. I did not spit that out as one of the properties because it's not in this vicinity, but that's across the river, 53 units.
53. So Monarch's Lofts 2 was earlier projected as 64. That's dropped by 11?
That may be 2, so I'll have to check back. My memory tells me 53, but I may be wrong.
You're doing off of memory, which is very impressive. I'm cheating with the document that was given by the school department last year, so...
And I... that's probably right because I provided them with those numbers, so...
So we're going with 64 on that, and that's on track? Pacific Mills Phase 3, end of 2018, 145? Is that not still?
Yeah, that's probably not going to be 2018. I have to update those numbers and send them new numbers because that's not... they're not on track. They haven't even started.
They haven't started.
So there's probably 2020, 2019.
Councilor Laplante? Can you make those numbers available to us and send it to us?
Absolutely. It's the same email sent to the school department, so I could just forward it to you guys.
I'm going to continue this because it's important that I say this because it helps me remember the numbers and the names. Pacific Mills Phase 3, we just talked about that, right? Newark Paper, 250 is what I have. Is that on track?
No, it's 198 plus 19, so what's that? That's...
179?
199?
16.
So 19... how much? 198?
So 198, the big building. So the big building's going to be 198 units.
Yeah.
And then there's a two-story building right next to it, and that's going to be 19 units of housing. You're giving 217, right?
217.
217.
And that's on track?
That's... I mean, you could drive by, you see it's under construction now.
Pacific Mills Phase 1 and 2, I've got 169, end of June of 2017. Is that completed?
Yeah, so they just... one of the buildings, the building that we had the activity at, they just received occupancy permits this week, so they're going to start leasing. And then the other building that's perpendicular to that building, that's right on the canal, that's... they're going to start getting occupancy permits now.
So ballpark of 169, does that sound about right?
Yeah, so let's call it, I don't know...
And the last one here is Unit Crossing Phase 2, and that's already been done, and that was additional 73.
Yeah, that's done. People are living there.
But the point... thank you. But that's true, though, 73. The point that I'm driving at here is that while we may look individually at just this one building, this one thing, we can't just look at it as a silo. We just can't look at this one particular project. We have to look at the city as a whole. We are moving children around through buses to various places. We're trying to build purchasing... we're looking at purchasing new buildings because of overcrowding issues. We've got a lot of issues. It doesn't make a difference if you live on Hayrow Street or if you live on Market Street, if you've got to go from one side of the city to the other, and you're going to cross over the Falls Bridge or the Central Bridge, you're still going to be stuck in traffic getting over there. It doesn't make a difference if there's a housing project on Newark Paper on Canal Street or if it's over on Essex Street, you still need to travel. You still need to park. So when you say, yeah, that doesn't really make a difference because this is a different area, it's... we're congested as a city. And the point that I'm trying to address is, and now we are adding or looking to potentially add... what's the number here again?
39.
20... how many?
39.
39. 39 more units.
Right.
On top of the... On top of the, and I had, gotta do the math there. Well, get it there.
I always, I always remember thousands because it gets, it gets me close.
Okay, so a thousand, and you're adding another thirty-nine on there, and that's, and that's just recent growth in our city. So, anyway, I, by these questions, you should know where I'm coming from, I think pretty loud and clear, right? So, and that's a concern. And not because I don't think this is a good project, not because I don't think the people who are working on this are good people, not because the mission's a bad mission, has nothing to do with that. But my role here is to try to figure out, how does this play a part? Now we have this building that we own, and now we gotta do something with this thing, or it's just gonna be sitting there, right? And now that's the pressure point. What are we gonna do with this place? That we purchased and now that we have, and what are we gonna do with it? And we're saying this housing. And I think your idea, and Mr. Payano's idea, which is maybe we can do something, a little, maybe this mixed use, maybe there's something else. But, uh, just completely.
And this, this is specifically for you, uh, councillor Plan.
Yeah.
This property here, and you are part of this process.
Yeah.
Was cleaned up in part by the, by the redevelopment authority.
Yeah.
So there was a certain amount of money put down by the redevelopment authority, a little bit of money put by CDBG. So the proceeds that come to the city for this is not gonna come to the city. Uh, six, sixty percent is gonna go to the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority, and forty percent is gonna go back to CDBG.
And that's attractive to me because we need to get that organization with some funding to do some work.
But thi- but this will go directly to the city, the, the, the actual, the building.
Yeah, thank you.
So you have that two items?
Thank you.
So councillors, um, like I was, like I was, um, my line of thought was if, if you prefer to keep this item here, go through the information and actually, uh, see if you like the project and talk about it. We get a lot of information today, to be honest with you. And Mr., uh, councillor Plan, uh, brought up, brought, brought up a great point, as well as councillor, um, Payano. So, councillors, what would I like to do?
Uh, so, Mr. Chair, I, I would agree to that point. I think that there's, um, uh, I wanna study this a little bit more, so I'd like to, uh, motion to table this to our next meeting.
So there's a motion on the table, a motion on the, on the, on the table there?
Sure, I'll, I'll second that.
All right. Motion to table. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 There is Harvard. So now we have a second item, which is a correlation of the first item, which is, uh, one, sixty-one seventeen, the disposition of three-seventy-two, uh, excess three, ten, ten, correct?
Correct.
So this is gonna be the second part of the project, uh, which is gonna be the, um, the building right next to it, but it's gonna be like a joint building, I guess, right?
Yeah, and the bid amount is ninety-six, six thousand, seven hundred dollars.
All right, the disposition for this building, if, the, for this lot is gonna be, um, so there was two different bids. Obviously, uh, between ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and one hundred and thirty-five thousand, three, uh, one hundred and thirty-five thousand. So I'm assuming that we went by, for the lowest bid because it was part of a, a, a project altogether.
Yeah.
Is the, is the, is the bidder was not part of, if the higher bidder on this item was not part of the, uh, of the.
They did not bid on the building. They just bid on the lot.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
They did not bid on the building. They just bid on the lot.
So, so, give me a second. Hold on. I have a few questions. So, the combination of, you, you were mentioning that there is some funds going to the Lawrence Redevelopment. Can you elaborate a little bit more about that and how this is gonna?
Right, so, so the building that, that was prob-, um, previously there was called, was referred to as the Truel Building. It's actually the site where the clatter used to be way back when. Um, and that, uh, building was identified as being a hazard. The city took ownership of it. And there was lack of funds for the city to be able to pay for the demolition of that building. It's just pieces of it were falling off. And the LRA stepped up, committed some money to it, and the CDBG program through the community development departments committed some money to it with the condition that when the building was sold, they would get paid back based on the percentage that they contributed for the demolition of the building. And I forget what that exact number was, but I know the split was sixty percent, forty percent. So sixty percent of that, the income that comes into that, um, that comes back to the city will be, will be going back to the LRA because they contributed sixty percent way back when. And CDBG contributed for forty percent way back when for the demolition of that building. So, so the agreement in place that was signed by actually City Council Mark Plant and Mayor Sullivan and the Community Development Director at the time, that was the agreement that they came up with.
So this, uh, the city is not getting any, any money with this?
Not for that parcel. They will for the building, for this building here, which is.
No, 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 because this is the parcel only.
Right, so, so we're gonna get five?
Yeah, yeah, but that's a different topic.
Yeah, right.
So for this one, sixty-one, uh, seventeen, what, the city's not getting any money?
Not directly. It's not going to the general fund though.
Okay, so the, um, the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority get, is getting a percentage, and the CDBG funds, it's getting a percentage as well.
Right.
Um, councillors? No, no further questions. Councillor, um.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there any way we could know, so there's a bid for a hundred and thirty-five thousand, what, what it was for?
Yeah.
The proposal was from, um, a furniture company. They proposed to build a one-story building, um, to extend their facilities.
So, so this was, so there's a furniture company.
Across the street.
And they want to extend.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Also, how many, um, how many cars do we think would be able to, to be in this, in this lot?
For the thirty-nine units, what's required?
It's not a lot.
It's part of the building, the second portion of the building.
So it's an extension of the building?
Is, is, yeah, it's an extension.
Okay, so then.
We did not want the request for, we did not want a parking lot built. We wanted, um, construction on that site.
I, I understand. Thank you.
Are there any questions that you, um, think you'll have by the next housing committee, or, um, so that?
Well, Liza, let me, let me respond to that. We've received this information today. So, that's something that it might change next time because we would like to get that information before, at least five days before we, we discuss anything here. So in that way, we have questions and we probably, um, open the communication between the two.
In the meantime, if you do have any questions at all, um, feel free to, um.
Yeah, definitely.
Let me know.
Um, councillor Plan?
Yeah, so I, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on the second proposal. So right now, with the old Truel Building, there's an empty lot. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Right. And so what, what the proposal here is, is that it's going to dovetail with the earlier discussion, which is, and it be, it will be used for parking?
No.
No.
I'm sorry, help me understand. What will this tru- old Truel lot be used for?
If you look at the image, the first portion.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll point.
One more time, and I know you probably already said my head was swimming with numbers earlier. Sorry.
That's the current building.
Yeah. Could you bring the microphone to her, please, so?
Three-seventy is here.
Three-seventy is where?
I'm sorry. Three-seventy is this building, the current existing building.
Yeah.
This building is on three-seventy-two, three-eighty-six Essex Street.
You're gonna build it.
So we're gonna build up to the sa- make the building look the same. It's now a vacant lot.
Clear now. Thank you so much.
And all of that together is thirty-nine units. It's not thirty-nine units in this building. The whole thing is thirty-nine units and seventy-seven hundred square feet of retail space.
Thank you. And the other proposal was just, there's a, currently there's, you said, there's a, uh, there's a store nearby that had an interest in it?
Across the street from the building, there's.
Across the street?
Yes. Um, there's a furniture store, BD Furniture. They proposed to do a one-story facility to extend their business.
How competitive was their bid?
Um, their bid amount was a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, the design was not very, um, good. When we looked at the, the, the first proposal from Gray and Lawrence, um, Community Action, um, Council, combined with the bid that they proposed for the empty lot, it was a better proposal than the entire.
Thank you.
Yes, I have. Uh, councillor, uh, councillor, um, Payano?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, did this process go through the same sort of bidding process like it was put in beginning of spring, and the deadline was August?
August twenty-eighth.
Okay, thank you.
I have a few questions, and then we can send some report to us. So, the whole project, the thirty-nine units, how many parkings will be required, uh, for the building to go up in terms of parking requirements? And i- if it is an exemption of parking, currently?
So do you have the, the sheet that shows the unit? If you have one unit, you need one parking spot. More than one unit, you need two parking spots.
Okay, so.
And those, that will be addressed with the zoning board, um, once.
Yeah, it will be addressed to the zoning board, but it's important to this council, uh, to this body as well. Sixty-four total? All right, so can you send us, um, you, we have it here?
No, so if you look at fourteen.
So you did the calculation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so can you send us that information over?
Absolutely.
An email format?
Mm-hmm.
And how much money in terms of taxes this building is gonna bring to the city? Can you send that report out? So you don't have to say it now.
I have, I, yeah.
In the first year, in the first year of operations, it would be twenty-five thousand. That's our guess, considering the, uh, tax rate right now. So three years from now, it'll probably be a little more than that. And then we, we have a pro forma that chose.
And that will be, it, it consider it a commercial mix, or it's gonna be, and, uh, what, how it's gonna be?
Mixed.
Mix? And, uh, we basically, um, that's based on the seven thousand, seven hundred square feet for retail and then commer- and then residential?
Yes.
And that's, um, that's the same rate as the city have currently?
That's the rate that you have at the moment, based on the income of the building.
So is that the difference when we do affordable housing in terms of taxes? I, I just wanted to cla- to make sure that we, um.
My understanding that the, the tax rate that they will be paying will be the same as any other commer- residential building. That's, that's not right?
Councillor Plan?
My discussion with the assessor's office, uh, there's market rate housing in that if it's a, if it's a, almost like a forty B or affordable housing project, uh, they're taxed at a reduced rate. There's less money coming into the city for those kinds of units as opposed to market rate units.
Okay.
I, I, I think, I think it's, and I may be wrong, but we'll check with Alex, but I think it's, it depends on the entity that's gonna be holding the development. I think be- because you're, because GLCAC is planning a whole day as a, as a for-profit oper- operation, I think that may be different, but we'll, we'll check up on that.
All right, so.
That's an important question to ask, and, and I, you, I, I've heard that, so I just.
So I would like to, um, um, probably send recommendation to Alex Vega to give us a full report in terms of this project, if, if it's go through. Councillor would like to move this as a, as a, as a, uh, would like to do this as a form of a motion, and that way we have an official report from Alex directly.
I would, I, I would be happy if you, if you wouldn't mind it, the next time you do this presentation, just be prepared to have those figures from, from the assessor's office, and that's, that's for me, that I'm fine with that.
And we, we could, we could include it in whatever correspondence email that we send out to you folks.
I do have the information, um, with me, um, but I'll just, I'll just email it to all of you.
I have another question as well.
On, on this, on this one point, I think what would be very enlightening, if, I believe what I said is true. Uh, I could be wrong. I could misunderstand what the assessor said. Uh, if what I said is true earlier, I would like to know from the city assessor's office two numbers. One is the market rate figure. If that was all market rate housing, what kind of taxes would be coming into the city as opposed to what this proposal is? I'm presuming it's a reduced rate, what that rate is, so I'd like to know what both those numbers are.
Yes.
That's why I was asking to see if, if that, we can official report directly from the, from his department, or?
I trust it very good.
I, I had a conversation with the city assessors today. He is gonna draft a memo, um, to have ready for the city council. But he did confirm the figures provided, um, and the proposal to be, um, a good estimate of that amount, which is about twenty-five thousand for the first year and increases every year.
Mr. Chair, I, I think that would be, if, um, the assessor's gonna provide a memo, I think that's, um, fine on my end.
Okay. So, so we're talking about parking lot. We're talking about taxes. We are talk, are now, um, I would like to know as well, what's the, the percentage of the population that might take advantage of this affordable housing? In terms of, uh, in terms of the current income that we have, um, per capita?
What's the percentage of the people who might?
Be able to apply and may be able to take advantage of this affordable housing?
Well, let me just say this. I don't know what the percentage is. I can get that for you.
Yeah, that's basically what I would like to know.
But just so you know, GLCAC has a unduplicated, um, client population of thirty-two thousand people. Those people would be the people who would be, um, ma- make them, they would be, these units would be available to them.
So can we have that as well, um, for next meeting, uh, that way we can, uh?
What specifically, what specifically? How many people?
No, in terms of the percentage, and that way we have, like, we, we, when we look at the entire population, we will say, oh, on this thirty-nine unit, maybe thirty percent of the community might be able to take advantage of this.
I can give that to you. No problem.
Uh, councillor Payano?
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm also interested, you know, like, I've definitely seen some programs, especially when you're talking about affordable housing and mixed housing, where they, uh, figure out ways to sort of develop a, a community, um, around that. It sounds like, um, it, it sounds like something that you, you guys are, are leaning to. Um, I, I didn't hear anything from the presentation, uh, kinda going that way. Maybe I'm, I'm, I'm making it up. That's not something that, um, you guys are interested in doing, but if you are, I definitely would love to hear, uh, more about that.
And when you say develop a community, you mean?
Well, I mean, you're, it, it's looking like you're, you're, you're getting thirty-five units, you know, potentially thirty-five families, whether by themselves or they're, whether with kids, um, are gonna be living there. I think that's a tremendous opportunity, especially for, uh, an organization like yours to do something different than what normal developers do, which is essentially that they, you know, they build something, they rent it out, and that's it, right? So, if, if we're doing that, and there, we also have, you know, space downstairs, and we want these folks, um, to be more, um, create more of an impact in this area, I think, um, you know, the fact that you're a nonprofit organization and, and you're, you're dealing with, um, this community, and you have a history with this community, it is an opportunity to do something more than just rent out the space.
We would absolutely do that. We have all sorts of resources at GLCAC that will support these families, but also we have case managers and all kinds of support systems, and we're a half a block away from the building. But we would absolutely do that.
Okay, so, so I think, um, I, I would love to, to hear, I mean, I mean, not necessarily today, but just sort of an idea of what, what the plan would be around that.
Okay, sure.
So, um, any other questions? Possibly, uh, any possible information that we would like to see before we come here, um, next time to discuss?
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to vote on both matters tonight, but I do understand why some members of the committee are looking for more information. I will support the membership's desire to get more information, although I'm prepared tonight to vote, but that's fine, if that's what you want.
Yeah, let's give the benefit of the doubt.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Chair, have we, um, um, I, my memory's gone. Did, did we already vote to, to table this, or not?
No, we haven't yet. So once we put a motion to table, no discussion is allowed.
So, um, motion to table for, until next meeting?
All right, there's a motion to table.
Second. It was second.
Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
There is Harvard. Thank you so much. We have two more items tonight, um, on the agenda.
Thank you.
So, Liza is here tonight, and she would like to speak, uh, about item three, twenty-four seventeen on the agenda, which is the surplus declaration of one-nineteen Maestri. We have that package today as well. So can I get a motion to take item, um, one, uh, three-thirty-four seventeen out of the table matters?
Sir, move. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
There is Harvard. Liza, you have the floor.
One-nineteen Maestri, um, became city-owned last year. It's a thirty-one thousand, nine hundred, two square feet lot. It contains, uh, two warehouses connected to each other, um, in good condition. So what we do, we do a survey of city department to see if there's a, a need for the building. There was no responses for a yes, so, um, that means we can declare a surplus. Um, we are currently in the processing, process of evicting the, the tenant that, that were there.
No, I mean, uh, if, Abel.
Can we order in the, order in the council chambers, please?
Abel, don't leave, please. Don't. Mm-mm, don't leave. All right, you can, you can continue.
So it's, um, if you look at the second page, it's this building on Main Street, across the street from the cemetery. It's a, um, two buildings connected with a big lot. Um, it's not in, um, bad condition, so we're hoping to get in there. And we have eviction proceeding currently with the tenants that are there. They're supposed to move out January thirty-first. So hopefully, right after that, we can go in there, take some picture, and mar- market it.
So tonight, we're just talking about a surplus declaration?
Just a surplus.
All right, councilor, councilors, are you, are, uh-
I'd like to make a motion to declare this, to make sense of full council, a favorable recommendation, declare a surplus.
Uh, there is a motion on the table.
Second.
Uh, discussion. Council, Councilor Payano, you comfortable with it? You still reading? You need more time? Good. Surplus declaration is just to be able to, for them to be able to keep on working on the process.
So we basically did this for Essex Street before we come for disposition. It's a simple survey.
To anybody.
Okay, yeah, I'm comfortable.
Okay. Uh, there is a motion on the table, probably second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 There is Harvard. To send it to the full council.
Favorable recommendation.
So now we have a second item, which is the same situation, item, uh, two-twenty-three-seventeen. Uh, it's a surplus declar- declaration of, uh, fourteen-sixteen Truman Court?
Yes. This is a, um, smaller lot, it's a vacant lot, five thousand, five hundred, forty square feet. It's a residential zone. It's vacant land, assessed at twenty thousand, nine hundred dollars. Same situation, it's just a city-owned property. Um, the survey came back, um, of department heads, that there is, there is no need for, um, to maintain, to keep this property.
On the Truman Street, and then there's an alleyway.
It's a two-step process. The city owns its property now. A lot of the, so they're gonna declare a surplus.
Got it.
And ask every one of the departments, do you need this? They say no, they don't need it. Now that we know it is the city for this parcel, and give it to, we have gotta vote to declare it a surplus.
That alleyway, Truman Court doesn't exist.
No, that's, it's a little street that, um, it looks like a driveway.
Got it. So what's, what's the plan for this property?
There is no plan, I'm just declaring a surplus, and then we'll explore what we can do. It's, it's a complicated lot, because it's behind two residential houses, so we probably don't want any buildings back there. Um, but maybe it would be a good yard sale, um, we're not sure yet.
Can you repeat that last part? I'm sorry, could you?
So, because it is five thousand square feet, so in a residential, it would be fine to build, but because it's behind two other residential houses, we probably don't want to build there. Um, but we, we just need to explore to see what would be the best use for the, for the city. But we have not had that conversation yet. This is just simply a surplus.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
So, so right now, what is this? Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so it looks like it's just a vacant lot, I see like a bunch of cars there, we just allow them to park there, basically?
So it's, the people that live in the area have been using it for years. Our plan is to declare a surplus and try to, um, start, um, towing vehicles out of there, cleaning the area out, and then see what we can do. Maybe try to sell, um, a portion to one of the houses, and the other portion to the other one, um, as a yard sale.
So you probably only considered two of the abotters?
He'll know about it next time. It's up to you.
So you're considering all of the abotters, or you have any conversation with them already?
With the owners? There are, there is several interests, this is why we're declaring a surplus. A lot of the abotters are interested in the lot. Um, but I don't like talking about it until it's surplus. Once it's surplus, we can send letters to the abotters again, and then explore what we want to do with it.
Councilors?
Make a motion to send it up to the full council, a favorable recommendation, declare a surplus.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
There is Harvard, thank you so much. Liza, there is any report for us tonight, in terms of property that we have sold?
No.
All right. Councilors, um, there is any item that you would like to take out of the table matters? What's the motion?
Motion to adjourn.
There was a motion to adjourn, second.
What? Yes. We don't have it on the agenda, but I mean, we can take a look into that. Oh, watch, yeah, we do, we do, we do. Um, before we take, before we adjourn the meeting, can we get a motion to, can you, can you withdraw the motion?
Sure.
Can I get a motion to accept the minute from October ten, two thousand seventeen? So moved.
I, I wasn't even here, um-
If, that's if you want, we can, we can keep it for next meeting, that way you can read it.
Because we have somebody else who wasn't here, who could vote for it.
Right, um, you know, I'll, I'll second it, I mean-
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
There is Harvard. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.